Ms. Cool?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Ms. Gelski?
Yes.
Ms. Thaler?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
President. Counsel, the minutes of our thirteen day meeting have been presented to you. Do you have any additions or corrections?
I agree.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions about the minutes? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Ms. Gelski?
Yes.
Ms. Thaler? Yes. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Do we have any reports from standing or special committees today?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool?
Tomorrow night at five thirty in the big conference room, there will be a joint committee meeting of personnel and public works. The discussion will be the future of Parkersburg Sanitation Department. It will, as always in committee meetings, it will be discussing among the city council members and the department heads that are there. Public is invited, but just wanted to inform you that the public does not get to speak at that time.
Thank you. Anyone else on council have any reports from standing or special committees?
Mr. President? My name is Council President Reynolds. It says in following City Council Jules number sixteen, "City Council Committees, it states that all committees shall be appointed by the presiding officer of regular special meetings." I hereby appoint myself as a member of the Finance Committee due to the resignation of Councilwoman Rexrode. That committee now consists of Ms. Thaler as chairman and council members Brown, Warkowski, McCready, and Mr. Reynolds. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone signed up for the public forum tonight?
We do. The first one is Cynthia Lockney.
Our public forum tonight is forty minutes of length. Each speaker that has signed up with the clerk will be four minutes to speak, and public forum is now open.
That'll be followed by one, all of them.
Good evening. I am your representative on the library board, and you also know that I'm hopefully be reappointed for another five years. But I wanted to give you a little update on the library. We have two big capital projects we're working on. One of which is replacing the bookmobile. And we've already gone ahead and ordered the bookmobile. The one that we have right now, we call Barnabas. Barnabas has been active for about thirty years, and this past year or two, he's been having issues about every month, and so we aren't always able to do our obligations to the outside sources that we traffic to and support with the bus. So we decided we need to open this facility, so we selected a bus, and it is now being built. The other project we're looking at is building a much larger library to Williams Town. We are working with the city of Williams Town and hope to use a portion of the elementary school that's still standing to be to be part of the new library. It'll be, we hope to be, not quite five thousand square feet. But what I can help, what we can do is run the library up there. If she has any events, she has to move all the shelving back and bring in tables and, you know, it's quite a, and they do have really good attendance, really programs. So we feel that it's something that community will need. The other thing I want to talk about is we're getting ready for our summer program with our kids. Last year, we had almost eleven hundred children attend throughout the summer, and they get books when they come, free books. They, this year's theme is art. They'll be doing different things to utilize the art. I think one of the things they're going to do is paint some pots or something. But they're, every week will be a different project. I think there are eight weeks total between, between July and July for the kids in our community, and it's all free. On May thirty-first, we're going to have Library Fest. This will be our second one. It will be held in the parking lot at the library. There'll be food trucks there, music, I think face painting for the kids, but it's kind of our kickoff to start our summer program. And it will be from eleven A.M. to three P.M. Hopefully, the weather will be decent on Saturday, so we hope you all can come out and see what's going on in the library. I think the friends of the library are going to be selling some books. People don't have their books, they don't want anymore, and they're going to be friends of the library, and then they use that to fund, raise money for special committees. So I hope you all can attend, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that.
Next, Mr. Hall, Woodrow Street.
Stop watch here to make sure I don't go over time. Lawyers are sometimes going to be talking a little bit too long, so somebody will plug on me, I'm sure if I get too windy. Appreciate having the time to chat with you all for a second about a concern that's come to my mind. I'm not a regular down here, and I do know this to do. Appreciate being on the agenda, having an item on that I can talk about. And I appreciate Dr. Barrett and the folks who joined with me and bringing this matter forward. The reason that I'm here is about thirty-five years ago, my wife and I moved back to our home here in Parkersburg from out of state, and since that time, we've had regular and reliable trash service at our home on Woodrow Street. As you all know, we've had many administrations, mayors of all parties, Democrat, Republican. We've had all kinds of city councils in that time. We've had regular trash pickup problems for thirty-five years. For some reason, and I've heard various theories as to why, beginning this year, trash in the Woodrow Square, sometimes would be picked up, sometimes it wouldn't. Sometimes your recycling would be picked up, sometimes your trash would be left, sometimes it was reversed. We had a scratch for about three weeks. We didn't have anything picked up. Williams Court Alley looked like something out of, I don't know, Baghdad or something. Just a bunch of trash laying out there. So I'm here to just ask this council to fix the problem. I don't know what needs to be done, but having our city not have reliable trash service isn't good for anybody. It's not good for the homeowners. It's not good for the property values. It's not good for the businesses. And I don't know why we've had three and a half decades where we could count on having our trash picked up when it's scheduled, and now we can't. Now, I've seen in the press various excuses or reasons or rationales, this is different and that's different. I don't know, there's been a lot of things different over thirty-five years, but we always had regular trash pick up. So, I mean, I didn't run for this job because I didn't want it. I ran a job, and I wouldn't have it. Tried to give it to me today, couldn't give it to me. I was like, well, I'm not saying what it is because y'all aren't even know better than I do what it is. So, I mean, I'm not trying to make anybody feel bad, I'm not trying to put anybody down. I'm just telling you what we've experienced. I've called down here, very nice people I've talked to. I'm not running down the trash bin, but I think they're probably doing a hard job for not very much running. I don't know the details of all that because I'm not in charge of it. Didn't run for it because I don't want to be. All I'm saying and asking is one thing. Take a seat. That's it.
Next, we have Sarah Lloyd-Bright, Division Street Extension. And after that, Brian Graves.
Give a hand. We've got a lot of important issues on the council agenda, and there are several people here who want to speak. I hope that you will hear all of them on the topics that matter to them. This is our money that you are spending, and we deserve to be heard. You've got our attention. Curbside recycling has been temporarily suspended. If we are physically able and have sufficient transportation, we have been asked to sort and transport our recyclables to your facility at our expense for the city to sign and get. It is imperative that city restore the curbside pickup, all residents ASAP. To do that, we need more drivers and helpers, because we understand you are understaffed. If you would just pay a minimum starting hourly wage of fifteen dollars an hour, you could restore our service. C D L drivers, of course, could still start at a higher rate. I have heard you currently have forty-five drivers from multiple routes across our entire city, plus the helpers. Yes, and you are short-staffed, and it is your responsibility to fix the problem. It's not as if you don't have the funds. You have a pending budget resolution to spend seven hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars in previously unaccounted revenues. The Finance Department has been working hard to redistribute those revenues among the various departments, including approximately one hundred and seventy-three thousand transferred to the Capital Reserve Fund, and redistributing nine thousand from salaries and wages in the sanitation fund to overtime expense in the same fund. I'm asking you to put a pause on approving those reallocations of those funds until sufficient details can be provided. We need to be investing in city employees at an equal or greater rate than the capital requirement. That doesn't take into effect the proposed four dollars per month sanitation increase on the agenda tonight for all households, starting in July. But your finance director has estimated will bring in additional five hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't account any carryover in the sanitation fund for this year. What are you waiting for? You have an ordinance on final reading tonight to amend table one in the classification table. I'm asking that you send table one back to the Personnel Committee for further review. The proposed minimum wage is not your living wage for most of the hourly workers covered in this table, and you will not attract workers in some of the most depleted departments such as sanitation until you raise those wages. This city should not look like a third world country. The citizens of Parkersburg deserve better, and the signs at city entrance proclaiming how great we are do not outweigh the realities of driving through the city, looking at vacant lots, overgrown grass, and trash piled everywhere. City council has the right and the duty to commit the plans to address these issues. Thank you.
Next is Brian Graves from our library, Liquid Circle.
So I signed up just in case Cindy didn't speak on her own behalf. I mean, she didn't, so I'll speak on her behalf. I've had the pleasure of working with Cindy now for five years. She's been a valuable asset for our library board. She brings a good mind, she lives in all the subjects, she does her own research on everything either that comes aboard, cut in front of us, and she's engaged with the library, she's a user of the library, not only as a personal patron, but also as her grandmother. Brings her grandchild to Storytime. She's involved in some of the program and so forth. And what did she do for her opportunity to come up here and speak tonight? She came up to talk about providing. So this is the kind of representative we do have on the library board. She serves in your interest. We do send you out the minutes and other activities that we do every month. They give you a report, which she writes business as a secretary, and she's also, has been put in there, she's your representative, so she's free to come here and speak to you all, or answer any of your questions. If you have any questions about the library, she wants to, she may herself available, her contact information is in the form of emails every month that I send. Just thank you for your time. I would consider it. Thank you.
Next, we have Brian Hayden, Thirty-First Street. Followed by Rusty Madison.
The phrase "I told you so" will be replaced with "This easily predictable outcome" was identified early on and brought to your attention. In two thousand and eighteen, the city council commissioned a report on the economic health of the city of Parkersburg. The bottom line of this report was that our executives and administration are grossly overcompensated, whereas there is a significant undercompensation of the labor trades.
Mr. Hayden, which item number are you talking about on the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, the resolution from Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, to amend the rules and regulations regarding the public forum as written, adopted, and unamended does not empower the chair to pose this question, nor does it compel any speaker to answer. This is a usurpation of the resolution and is without cause according to Robert's Rules of Orders. This is a breach of decorum by the chair. Now, in order to insulate the chair from further improper action, I begrudgingly and with protest state that I am addressing Agenda Item Eight, Subsection Three and Five. I shall now proceed, and I reclaim my time. The city council at that time, the bottom line of this report was that executives and administration are grossly overcompensated where there is a significant undercompensation of the labor trades. This undercompensation is tantamount to exploitation of the labor trades. The city council at that time, with some members who are still present, embraced this report by voting to make no changes to business as usual. Since then, the city council has voted overwhelmingly to continue this exploitation, notwithstanding a single fortuitous increase for certain existing city employees. Absolutely no effort has been made to take action on the underlying failures of our classification and compensation plan. Combining this exploitation with a generally toxic culture perpetuated by the city's leadership, it is easily understandable that a recent op-ed in the News and Seton rightly condemned your patrician versus plebeian dichotomy. In light of my complaints, I've offered the following solutions. Motion to amend on ordinance three, the position of fire inspector created under table three, Civil Service Non-Exempt, C S dash one A, to remove the potential conflicts of interest of serving at the pleasure of the mayor. Ordinance five, motion to divide. One, motion to approve the creation of the housing coordinator position at S four. Four, vote down or table the increase of the maximum salaries that are already overinflated. This action will only affect a small number of persons who are suitably positioned to bear the impact of an austerity policy as endorsed by the current mayor. Three, motion to commit table one to the Personnel Committee until finance director can provide an updated table that reflects the appropriate wage increase in all position classifications that should have been enacted in two thousand and eighteen with sufficiently year, sufficient yearly adjustments to facilitate full staffing. I remind the council that Representative of District Two previously lamented from this diadus about that prior failure to act. How should this be financed? Auditor for the State, Mark Hunt noted on April third, two thousand and twenty-five, that the city had a carryover of two point nine million dollars. This carryover is money taken from the taxpayer without any services provided. The city budget indicates that the sanitation fund has an excessive revenue, an amount of approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. Taken together, that is over three and one half million dollars. This represents ten percent of the entire city budget. As these funds are compelled to be taken from the taxpayer, we expect services that we pay for. Some present may believe that overcharging and then underdelivering on other parts of services is an ethical way to keep talking, because it's private state or a lifetime service. There are, there's, you're done, you're four minutes up, I'm running this meeting. Take a seat. Thank you. To quote Bill, Mr. Brown.
Next, we have Rusty Madison, Swan Street, followed by Michael Westbrook.
I beg to pine for some more for a loud mouth. Under the marks, power takes control. Once, one part of the roads gave in. Representatives in the public, thank you for this and that. And for two, our trash department deserves to raise before any of you, any, back in here. And for two, I want to talk to you about that purse you made about the main idea.
Mr. Madison, let's stay.
No, I'm, I'm, shut.
No, I won't, you won't shush me, sir. I'm running this meeting, okay? You can be removed. Talk about something that's on the agenda, or you'll be removed. It's that simple. This council's not.
He can post on Facebook, but.
That, we're not here, we're not talking about.
I don't give a shit.
Okay.
He can't talk.
You're going to take a seat, or I'll ask the officer to remove you.
I'll, I'm fucking sick.
Michael Westbrook, John Longstreet.
Fuck you guys, you guys work this. You have to tell him, you guys fucking work.
I couldn't hear your name, disagreeing.
Michael Westbrook.
Thank you.
Woodrow Street.
Thank you.
So I'm here tonight to look at my own thoughts. I keep telling everybody in the district, if you have issue with something, don't just send us an email. Let's all come out and start talking about it. That's why I'm here. A lot of what I'm going to say will sound very similar to what Walt was saying, because, well, with what we've got from it, we've talked about the trash issue. Uh, again, as you know, over the last few months, again, it's a hard job. I don't know what their wages are. I've heard they're low, I've heard you can make more if you can score more fast food, and what you can make, literally going around picking up our trash. That's not going to attract a lot of people. You know, I've heard, you know, hey, we can all take our recycling to the recycling center, which that sounds fine, except for most people really don't, I think, have the time to load up their recycling into their car and drive it down. It doesn't solve the problems there of the trash, because most people are actually going to be, instead of recycling and doing something that's a little good for our city, are going to throw it out with their garbage, which doesn't help the people that are working, and it doesn't help our environment. You know, I see that number ten on the agenda today is talking about this, and I see this proposed four dollar increase. I will say whether I'm for or against that, but I will say, counsel, I would very much appreciate that the answer is to what will that four dollars you can use for? If it's for wage increase to the workers, I'm for it. If it's anything else, it's, as Walt said, you know, we're in the historic district, and pretty sure it's one of the largest or worst attractions in Parkersburg. Sure feels like, I'm not sure if it's going to go through, and from what I've heard from, I can't think of the names, but it, it doesn't look good when you, you know, for some of us, it goes out for the back alley, you don't want to see it. For some folks, it goes directly in front of their houses, right into Woodrow Street. So people that are new to the area and walking by looking, they see our trash and our recycling sitting out, that's what they're going to see. And I think anything else I say will be more or less repeating the information that I'm looking for, as asking you, if that four dollar increase is for the workers, then we go forward. If there's anything else, I hold your line.
Thanks, sir.
That's all we have, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. This town will close our public forum, and see if we have a message for the executive tonight.
This morning, quickly, wondering about how the storming comes up in the neighborhood. I can see any of you guys out there, but we're headed over to sixty degrees. I do have to give some kudos to our engineer at the south. You know, I don't know whether I've communicated this, but at, you know, a lot of times we go to the park, it's like Southwood Slide. We have a firm, Adam Design, from Stendis Center. He took information from public input over the years, made sure that we got some additional shade out there, and then another big kudos, we had a new certified pool operator jump in by the name of Zarian in Parks Department. We got certified Everett six, eight months ago, something like that, new to that certification. And our Southwood Pool is a little complex. I don't get into all the details, but we make our inventory over there, and he jumped in with both of them. So myself and Everett, not because I'm here tonight, but he has been in the folks at the apartment. I'm a little nervous about getting that pool squared away for pH and alkalinity and all that stuff, but, so I just want to put that out there. But whatever the last day of school is in Wood County, the pool will be open under normal. And so that's all I have tonight, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Item number one, a resolution reappointing Cindy Lockney, Seventy-oh-six, Twenty-Third Street, to Parkersburg, Wood County Public Library Board for term to expire June twenty-third. Mr. President?
Dr. Daly?
Make a motion to accept the resolution reappointing Cindy. It's not bad.
We have a motion and a second to confirm. Are there any questions from council? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Warkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Thaler?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Resolution number two, please.
A resolution requesting a U N budget revision for the General Fund, Parks and Recreation, Capital Reserve, and Sanitation.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cool?
Here for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from council. Are there any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hubbard?
Yeah, I see the seven hundred and sixty-three, five hundred, and additional revenue coming in for the General Fund. And the way that we're spending that, I just had a few questions about some of the line numbers. On finance, we had a hundred and five thousand dollars for B and O collections. We're raising that forty thousand, taking it to one forty-five, and I'm wanting to know who has that contract and what they do, and what the terms of that contract would be for the one forty-five. Is that something?
Madam Derrick? Guy can answer. I'm going to pick the others up again, but he can't answer.
We engage a firm to identify businesses who are likely operating within study permits based on a database that they maintain, and then they send these businesses on B and O forms, get them registered with a business license, and compliant from a B and O standpoint, at business license standpoint, and user standpoint.
And has the, I'm just wondering how effective that program is if they has paid for the one forty-five contract services?
Well, they are entitled to fifty percent of paying at collections. So if they claim.
That they, well, that they locate, not fifty percent of all.
So yes, they pay for themselves a hundred percent.
So is that commission based like that only, or is there also a base amount of?
Commissional. For the next, for two years after identification, so third year, it's all ours.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Brown, while he's here?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Tubbs?
On your podium installation, the contractual services, that extra sixty-five hundred, is that mostly grass and weeds, or is that something else?
That is shoring up that line for items such as grass and weeds contract. There are also cleanups that come out of that line, and it's a shoring of that line up. Again, this is for estimates to be at the festival here.
If I can follow up, these probably would be bids under the twenty-five thousand, so they don't go out into the newspaper for bids. Is there a way that we're getting those contracts for cutting grass and weeds?
We put that out to bid.
I mean, I understand it's not over twenty-five thousand, we don't have to put it in the newspaper.
If it's estimated to cost twenty-five thousand during an entire year, then yeah, we put out the bid.
Okay, we put it out like in a batch, so it's over twenty-five thousand?
We estimate that annually, we will spend over twenty-five thousand on the grass weeds. So we put it out to bid and ask for a unit price, so that we get, you know, the price for long. That's how we get out the grass weeds contract.
Mr. President? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, these are all estimates, and after June thirtieth, then we will have our members, the local, the county, the city, and the county ballots. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Resolution number two. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, can we get the denoting, please?
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Warkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Thaler?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Resolution passes, four minutes on its final reach, please.
Yes, resolution passes. Orders on final read, please.
An ordinance permitting and reenacting the classification and compensation plan for the city of Parkersburg, table one, part-time hourly positions in table three, civil service, non-exempt position classifications.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole?
May I for adoption of the ordinance on Parkersburg?
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Are there any questions from council? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexford?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ordinance passes number four, please.
Final reading, an ordinance permitting and reenacting the city of Parkersburg Policy and Procedure Manual, section nine, subsection C, sick time payout program. Mr. President.
Mrs. Tuck.
I move to adopt the ordinance permitting and reenacting the city of Parkersburg Policy and Procedure Manual about the sick time payout program.
Second. We have a motion of a second. Are there any questions from council on number four? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexford?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Number five, please.
Final reading, an ordinance permitting and reenacting the city of Parkersburg Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual Position Classification Schedule.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole?
May I for adoption of the ordinance on final reading?
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Item five on final reading. Are there any questions from council? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexford?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Ordinance on final reading passes. Number six, please.
First reading, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition and construction of additions, improvements, and improvements to the sewage portion of the existing public combined waterworks and sewer system of the city of Parkersburg thereof, not otherwise provided, through the issuance by the city of not more than thirty million dollars in aggregate principal amount of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five A, and not more than two and a half million in aggregate principal amount of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five B, providing for the rights and remedies and security for the registered banners of such bonds, authorizing execution and delivery of all documents related to the issuance of such bonds, approving, ratifying, and confirming a non-purchase agreement related to such bonds, authorizing a sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds, and adopting other provisions related thereto.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole?
May I for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Tuck.
Um, I wonder if we, um, I know that the city of Parkersburg put seven hundred thousand into, or seven million, sorry, into, uh, the art money into the water and sewer program. And I'm just wondering, and I know we're getting a filtration set, uh, system of twelve million. Could, could we just hear a quick explanation of what these bonds cover, just the overall picture? Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll start. Should we, should I take the initiative from making that a correct conclusion? Should the seven million dollars, this was a water project on, and those were small diameter lines?
Small and large.
Small and large, both, I apologize.
And tank improvements.
Yeah, and, and tank improvements. Um, so that was a totally separate project. I, I encourage you to look at bond financing or water and sewer financing as individual financing units. We finance above, city council approved, rate increases for water. We use art money to supplement, and you had to go borrow less money. This is totally separate from that. There's funds, this is different bonds, different forgivable loans, grants, either wherever it comes from, I J D C or rural, wherever the money comes from, that is a totally separate form. And I'll let you talk a little bit about the plan for utilities.
They're actually two separate. They call it combined, but water has to stand on water money and sewer has to stand on sewer money. This is strictly, excuse me, used sewer. It's a twenty-six million dollar project to replace approximately nine thousand feet of sewer interceptor that is currently pumped. It's a, it was built at a higher elevation, it was built at a there's pump stations. It's time for a big play. What we're going to do is put the sewer deeper, in fact, we're originally building bays and do away with pump stations, which are high maintenance endeavors, pipeline. You, you have very little own expense on pipeline, pump stations, it's a continual pipeline. That's all.
We have any other questions from council on, uh, number seven? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexford?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ordinance on first reading, number seven, please.
An ordinance permitting and reenacting article nine twenty-seven oh one of the qualified ordinances of the city of Parkersburg with respect to adoption of rules and regulations and increasing rates and charges for sanitary sewer service.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole?
May I for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Are there any questions from council on number seven?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borkowski?
Just want to say I've been able to attend a couple of the pub meetings here recently and certainly impressed with the professional makeup of the board. And seeing that there's been no sewer increase since two thousand fourteen, going on a four years, two thousand seventeen, that increase ended, I'm in full support of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on council wish to speak or have a question? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexford?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Ordinance passes first reading. Number eight, please.
An ordinance authorizing the design, acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain extensions, additions, improvements, and improvements to the existing sewer system of the city of Parkersburg.
Mr. Brown?
May I agree.
The motion approved and we have seconds.
Second.
Do we have a motion of a second? Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexford?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Ordinance passes first reading. I believe it takes still the number nine.
That was a spot for other things that aren't, or everything still that, is that correct? Item number ten. An ordinance permitting article nine fifty-five oh nine A, waste disposal, disposal fees by increasing fees from eighteen dollars to twenty dollars a month effective July one twenty twenty-five.
Mr. President.
Mr. Brown?
May I agree the ordinance, the article nine, five five, or nine, wait, no.
Second. We have a motion of a second. Are there any questions from council on number ten?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole?
Hi, um, question for the mayor or for Eric, which I don't want to answer this, the mayor would probably know, he's been telling. Now we're raising the fee four dollars per month to give them a two dollar on the hour pay increase for CDL offices, or whatever. Even though this four dollars is supposed to bring in approximately five hundred thousand dollars in revenue, how much of that revenue do we actually write off because people are paying their sanitation bills?
I, I will tell you that we, we bill police firing sanitation fees simultaneously, we call it utility charges, or something like that.
My estimate for fiscal twenty-six is two hundred and twenty thousand.
Two hundred and twenty thousand.
So of that.
Same, that's sanitation.
I'm sorry.
Sanitation.
Right, sanitation, two hundred and twenty thousand. So of that five hundred thousand, we're going to write off two hundred and twenty thousand plus.
If I may, the total estimated revenue from the billing is three million, one hundred and nine thousand. So with the four dollars, and so that two hundred and twenty thousand is estimated for the entire three, three point one, not five, three thousand.
Eric, could you repeat that? I'm, I'm having trouble hearing, I'm sorry.
With the four dollar increase. Is that better right here?
Yeah.
With the four dollar increase, an estimated three point one million in revenue.
That's how much the four dollars brings in?
Total, that's the total, twenty-two dollars. And of that, I anticipate writing off about two hundred and twenty thousand. Of the three point one million total.
Mr. President. Mrs. Tucker, you do?
Yeah, we got one, thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Uh, for Mr. Giles, so the four dollar increase is an estimated five hundred and seventy-six thousand, is that correct? Revenue?
Five hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Okay. And how much of that goes towards the wage increase? For two dollars?
For two dollars? I, I mean, here's the thing, an estimated total of three million, total revenue, three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, that's three million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and this is all in the budget that you adopted here recently. Of that, three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. One million, four hundred and sixty thousand is personnel cost. Wages, benefits, etc. Eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred is contractual service. Two hundred and eighty-three thousand is supplies. Two hundred thousand is transferred capital reserve so that we can have money in there for what we need back to.
All the numbers that you're recording right now, are those increased numbers or total with the budget?
Those are total with the budget.
Okay.
Okay? And this is where you can see where we're spending money, right here. And, you know, there's also depreciation expense, there's bad debt expense. Again, we're not going to collect every dime that we bill. Okay, so specifically, this five hundred thousand dollar increase is dedicated exclusively for that, that's not how it works. That's just not how it works. Okay? Well, how it works is we have an estimated for total revenue and an estimated expenditure, that's how it works.
Okay, because I had done, I had asked you a few questions last week, I hadn't heard back. The five sixty-five revenue, it looks like, so we're increasing the bad debt expense, you had said two twenty, but we're not increasing it, we're increasing it about thirty-six thousand dollars of that five sixty-five, thirty-six thousand about will go to that?
Yes.
One hundred thousand will go to wages. And then we have, uh, we're increasing our capital reserve transfer this year by fifty thousand?
Two hundred thousand.
From one fifty to two hundred.
There was one fifty one.
Okay, so it's the same, not two hundred.
There, there has not been a transferred capital reserve, uh, since fiscal twenty twenty, because fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-five, we purchased back the trucks with artwork money.
Okay. Well, my issue here is that whenever I was presented with the four dollar raise, I was thinking I was mostly to go to better wages so we could find more drivers, so that we could resume more service. But it looks like only a hundred thousand of the five seventy-six is being used for that. So I'm thinking that we either need to lower the fee, the four dollar fee, or we need to do something about the wages with the five, save five, half a million dollars we get with increased revenue.
If I may also point out, you're also making up a fiscal fifteen or fiscal twenty-five deficit of a hundred and sixty thousand. So here's, you know, before this rate increase, you're starting on, in the whole by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And add that just to the two hundred for capital reserve, there's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that needs to happen, otherwise we're not going to have the equipment over. So three hundred and sixty thousand, right off the top, that five hundred thousand, if you want to look at it that way. And then the rest of it is, uh, you know, personnel costs and other things here that, uh, you know, the city has not been and will not be immune from inflation. So, you know, costs go up year in year out. You know, one thing about this budget is that it's a budget. It's an estimate. Okay? The actual result's different from the budget. So, when you, again, I don't think that it's proper to say, oh, I'm raising the rate of five hundred and some thousand to go to these specific things when the fund in and of itself needs to operate as a whole.
Okay, that two hundred thousand dollar capital reserve transfer, does that go to any sanitation equipment specifically?
Yes. Here's a earmark in there already for a recycling truck in capital reserve. It is for a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar earmark, and then there's four hundred and some thousand, uh, contingent for capital outlay, which includes packer truck. Are we spending all that now? No. But we will when we need a packer truck.
Right. And that, just to be clear, the capital reserve fund will go more than just sanitation related projects, right? You know, any city projects, police, flood law, streets?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Borkowski? I'm trying to maybe simplify this for us. Um, and Eric Stager, speaking of right, he's saying that it's, does the jive, but we're proposing to go from eighteen to twenty-two dollars. It's my understanding that that four dollar increase, boy, that's not my understanding, the fact of the matter is, we budgeted, voted on that budget prior to a two dollar increase for our sanitation workers. So if you look at that four dollar increase, we're mainly looking at a three or four year time period where our sanitation, like, will be whole. We voted a two dollar increase on top of that, so now we're going to be upside down next year. We're going to have to raise rates just to maintain and to be able to provide services moving forward. And we have to keep in mind that this is an enterprise fund. We can only spend what we bring in, we can't subsidize. So if you look at it, we can do one of three things, and if anybody else has any ideas, I'd love to hear them. We can pay our sanitation workers and raise your rates so much that some of you may pay for them, but we're going to have a whole lot more people upset with us because our sanitation rates have gone through the roof. We can pay our sanitation workers and not raise our rates, and we can have sanitation workers with a, with a good, good, uh, uh, paying rate, and we'll have no workers with a, with a good, good, uh, paying rate, and we'll have no equipment for them to pick up our trash. Or, we can look at the elephant in the room, privatisation. I don't think anybody on this council doesn't want to pay our sanitation. But for somebody to be a member of this body and to put out there on social media and to be quoted to say that there's a simple solution, if there's such a simple solution, it would already have been taken care of. Bring those simple solutions to the table, let us vote them up or down, but don't sit there. I think it's irresponsible for members of this body to go out to the public and tell them it's simple, just pay more without recurring, ongoing revenue to fund forever pay raises. Now, if you want to be told what you want to hear, there's probably people up here that'll do that for you, but I'm not that guy. I'm going to take the cold hard truth, and I'm going to work to find a solution and give us a reliable service at a reasonable rate, and I'll probably have much more to say tomorrow night, thank you. And I'm in favor of the four dollar raise because we need it.
Mr. President?
Chris Tuck?
Um, Eric, you told me to look at the budget, and I did. I looked at the balance sheet, I looked at the accounts on profit and loss, and I went through each year from two thousand and eighteen, so I might need to sit down with you and do this, but, and we had one year in two thousand and eighteen where we started off with a deficit, but according to this, there's been no deficit since two thousand and eighteen. I looked at the end of fund balance and sanitation, we have actuals, two thousand and eighteen we had eight hundred and eighty-two thousand to the good, in two thousand and nineteen we had a million and ten to the good, in two thousand and twenty we had one thou, that was ARPA money I did. In twenty-one, we had one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, in two hundred and twenty-two, we had two million, forty-eight thousand, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had three million to the good. I don't see, I have not been able to find where we have deficits, it's not showing up in, in either the balance sheet or the budgets itself. So, when you say we have a deficit, I haven't been able to find those.
So, all of those fund balance numbers that you just read off, those are all inclusive of capital assets. Okay, that includes packer trucks, that includes the MRF, the building, okay, that includes all of the equipment in that building, the conveyors, the, everything that it takes to make this operation work is included in those numbers. And you had noted that there was an increase in, I think you said fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, or whatever it was. But this council voted to transfer in between fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four, this council voted to transfer a total of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars into the sanitation fund. Okay, this council did that, or not, this, the last council, I apologize. Okay, and then also, ARPA, okay, purchased two very expensive packer trucks in the last year, okay, which also goes into that fund balance. So, if you want to look at what is completely expendable fund balance, you have to back up all the assets, you have to back all off, and you can do that on the balance sheet here. So, just count cash, uh, cash and receivables, okay, and then go down and reduce your, your payables, okay, and then you'll get a much better picture of how much money is actually sitting in sanitation work, okay? Now, the other thing that I want to address is, if you look at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, okay, we budgeted a deficit of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're, we're in that, budget, we're in. So, there's your projected deficit, okay? And so, you know, between those two years, between twenty-three and twenty-four, okay, there was fund balance transferred in, okay, and inclusive of all capital assets.
Well, I, that's, that's been the frustration, is that when I look at the budget we've given, what I show is an intergovernmental transfer in, in twenty-three, twenty-four of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So, I'm not, I, it's not showing, the balance sheets have never had a deficit in this that you gave, and then, so, it's, it's just, I, I agree with you, Andrew, that we really need to see the facts and figures because...
Well, ma'am, with all due respect, those aren't the facts and figures, okay, and please believe me when I tell you this, I have six years of college and CPA license to understand accounting, okay? And so, what I'm telling you, I'm trying to explain to you in, in plain terms, which, without trying, without sounding condescending, okay, I'm trying to be respectful, all right? What I'm telling you is, is those numbers, those transfers in, fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy thousand of that was packer trucks from ARPA. Three hundred and some thousand was what council would authorize to transfer in a previous year, at five hundred and eighty-two thousand, same thing, council would authorize that transfer. And there's, there's a black and white explanation for everything that you want to know, and, and it's all, it's all right there, and what you're looking at, those are the facts.
And the ARPA money doesn't show up on the, on the, in the budget. I mean, I don't know, I, when you're asking me to look at the budget, it's not showing. All I'm saying is that when I got the balance sheet, when I got the budget, the ARPA money does not show transferred in for the packer trucks or for some of these other things. They're, they're not easily accessible to, I'm not an accountant, but I, I can look at budgets and I can say, oh, that, that doesn't show up, you know, like, in here. I'm, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying, it's not...
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, I'm just presenting facts.
It's not easily accessible for me to understand why there's a deficit when I, when I look at the bottom lines, I'm not seeing one.
But again, if you, if you look at the audit report, if I, if I may real quick, if you look at the audit report, okay, which is given to all of you, you know, the balance sheets on the audit report, okay, they will tell you how much of the fund balance is, is invested in capital assets, okay?
But, I mean, I do.
Same thing, Mr. President.
Dr. Daley?
Which is, I just went in.
I'm sorry.
Which is, I just went in.
Okay. Are you done, Mrs. Tuck? Dr. Daley, did you have something?
So, so, yes, I'm a doctor, and, yeah, I would not like to hear that. But what I think you're saying, because I'm a very basic person, pediatrician, simple mind, sanitation, we had to put a lot of money into it just to make it whole, and those are deposits, you're transferring money from one thing to another in order for it to not be upside down, correct?
Yes. Don't commit attention where those were proposed, so the council will discuss.
And, and what Andrew said makes sense, that at some point we will flood and be upside down again because it's an enterprise fund. And if we don't continue to put money back in, there is a possibility we would start at a deficit like you did last year.
With the original four point two percent and four dollar increase in the rates, I anticipated that that would carry us on, uh, and be able to provide coalers for new sanitation staff for the next three years without having to raise the rates. Now, I don't think we can do that. I think we'll have to, we might be able next year to, to hold off, but the year after that would definitely, if we, if we aren't, if we are able to avoid a rate increase next year, the year after that, please.
Sir?
Just one thought, thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Hough?
So, what is not making sense to me about what you just said, is, okay, so, we need the four dollars just so we can keep running, stay in the positive, out of the enterprise fund, but are we not transferring two hundred thousand dollars out of sanitation to pay for things that are non-sanitationary?
That is false, completely false.
If I, if I may, non-accounting, so, anytime the City of Parkersburg buys capital equipment, which the definition of that is, how much does it have to cost?
Five thousand or more.
Five thousand or more. It's purchased for accounting rules and transparency and audit findings, it's purchased out of the capital reserve fund, whether it's a lawn mower, a sanitation truck, a recycling truck, pickup truck, all capital equipment and assets are purchased out of the capital fund. So, that fund, sanitation, puts, money's transferred out of there for their purchase of those trucks. We could have, I'm trying to throw something at me, we could probably have a capital fund for sanitation only if we wanted to, I mean, but we buy all of our capital stuff out of, anything plus five thousand dollars or more, it's purchased out of capital. That's how we budget, we have to show the auditor that this is what we're planning on spending on capital, and that's not just rolling stock, it can be, yeah, it can be, um, I don't know, we can, engineering stuff, maybe from time to time, you know, things of that nature. So, that's, so it's not all equipment, regardless of the park, fire trucks, geez, have a fire truck come in, and it's supposed to be the center, anyway, it's going to be purchased out of that fund, it was budgeted, that's where the money was appropriated, that's where it sat for two or three years, and we closed that gap with ARPA funds, I think, and put it all, it went in there, and then that's where the check written out of that fund, that's how we document and demonstrate buying capital equipment. All that stuff is bought out of capital. So, his estimate for packer trucks, and it might sit there for two, I mean, we've had stuff getting carried over for years, saving a little bit at a time, I think, I know at least one fire truck, gee, we did three years probably, uh, we did that with the first round of sanitation stuff before we got the ARPA, uh, so, you know, skid steers, backhoes, we, we save for things that we anticipate, particularly with pick items, which, you know, some of those twenty-six thousand pound or more vehicles are super pricey. Back truck, we did that? No, maybe, Fleischer truck, we did that? Fleischer truck, we did that?
Do we have any more discussion under discussion on number ten?
The regular ones? The regular ones?
Yeah, number ten, number ten, right? That's where we're at, number ten, we have a second meeting. Okay. Any more discussion on number ten? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, the vote please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Huffman?
No.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. And now we're going to discuss another one. We have a motion to abort the discussion, Mr. President. No, Mr. President, I think there's everyone who needs to talk under that is holding, thank you. Motion adjourned, we have a second. Second. Get the vote on adjourned, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
We're going to have the City Council meeting, the next meeting is going to be on the tenth of June, and following this meeting, we have U R A. We'll start U R A in all five minutes.